Can I call this meeting and have the city council workshop tomorrow?
You can sit in, please. Mr. Phillips?
Here.
Mr. Colom?
Here.
Mr. Sirianni will be absent. Dr. Selly?
Here.
Mrs. Faselli?
Here.
And I hereby certify that this meeting has been posted in the newspapers and the courts with the Open Public Meetings Act, the post is required by law.
Okay. I don't see Mr. Hirsch here yet.
He's got no office.
So, is he here? I'm going to start with just going over a little bit about the library program. Last meeting I mentioned and spoke a little bit about it. I want to get into a little more detail about the teen program. There's a teen ambassador volunteer program at the library, and anyone who needs volunteer hours can log their hours there, can volunteer there, and right there at our public library. There's also free lunch for children and teens every day, Monday to Thursday, noon to 2:00 P.M. The next program is something called Teen Tech Time. It's held in the teen zone, Monday to Friday, 4:00 to 5:30 P.M. And every day teens and tweens can get help with their homework or summer reading projects. They can surf the web, play online games. There are 20 laptops and Wi-Fi available. Teen Tech Time is monitored by a staff member. And then directly following that, there is a daily teen programming program from at 5:30 P.M. That's offered every day as well. They do things such as arts and crafts, they have parties, they have career discussion, kid pool, outside reading, card games, movie night, poetry reading. There's really plenty, plenty to do for the teens, and I just wanted to highlight that and let our public know. Thank you. Okay. Mr. Hirsch?
Yes, good evening.
Good evening. Mr. Hirsch is here to give us a discussion regarding Vacation of Jim Lynch Drive.
Yes, thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, this is my client, Morris Levy. We're claiming him in his wife's.
Hi.
Stephanie, who are in the process of building a beautiful new home. And they own the lot block 27 Lot 7. It's on the corner of Jim Lynch Drive. And we're not seeking to vacate Jim Lynch Drive, as you can see on the plans we had submitted, the surveyors submitted. It's a section of Jim Lynch Drive. When the engineer was doing work for the lot, they realized that this section of Jim Lynch Drive had an excess area of right-of-way. And so he suggested, Mr. Levy, you know, wanted to see if the city would be willing to vacate, make it part of your lot. You know, obviously, it'd make the lot bigger and we'll be paying taxes on it. So we submitted that drawing, which if it's vacated, you still have a full 50-foot right-of-way. So it doesn't affect the normal right-of-way for the street. This is the only property affected by the vacation. It's the only one it touches, this is property. Because then it starts a little bit like a triangle, narrows by the time you get to the edge of this property, it ends. So it gets narrower and narrower as it goes along Jim Lynch Drive, which was all in the survey.
Tom, I think there were two areas that the council needed a little bit of discussion on.
Yes.
One, if you look at Jim Lynch Drive, there are sidewalks on both sides of Jim Lynch Drive that stop right at north of the end of Mr. Levy's property.
Correct.
And I guess the question is, would Mr. Levy, if the council agreed to vacate, agree to put sidewalks in on that side of Jim Lynch Drive for uniformity? And the second issue was whether or not there are significant trees within the vacated area, and what would happen to them?
Sure. Yeah, the, yeah, we didn't know why the sidewalk wasn't continued when, back in the day, when the subdivision was granted for these lots, and for some reason it stopped there. I've got no idea why. But no, if the city wants the sidewalks, Mr. Levy's willing to put them in along his property. And the tree issue, Mr. Levy, even more than the city, wants to keep his privacy and so on and so forth in the corner lot. So he will probably end up putting in a more aggressive landscape plan along that area. One of the reasons he wanted to control that area, you know, the vegetation area isn't, you know, the best. It's a lot of scrub, there's a few mature, maybe four or five, I don't know exactly, oak trees in that area. So he wants to maintain a buffer. And he hasn't really finalized it. I don't know if you want to see copies of the plans that he submitted. He needs no variances or anything. But we have his building plans here, if you'd like to look at them. It's a really gorgeous house. He needs no variances. He's filed for the zoning permit. So I guess the best way to approach that, Jim, is in the future, if you were to ever want to remove any trees, replace them with maybe more decorative, better, healthier trees, we would, we would replace whatever we remove. He has no immediate plans to do any, to remove anything there. He's going to leave it. But we would certainly agree that if he said, you know, "I'd rather plant some, you know, maybe year-round evergreen-type trees instead of deciduous," you know, that we would, if we wanted to take trees down, we would be replacing that with a complete vegetative buffer along that line. Because that's his ultimate goal, have a complete vegetative buffer year-round along Jim Lynch Drive.
We now participate in the community forestry plan. And, can you hear me? Okay.
I, yes, I can.
Okay. The community forestry plan, and in it, it requires that we keep, you know, try to keep our tree canopy, our existing tree canopy. So I did, we did present this to the environmental commission. They came before us, and they did observe that there's five trees of reasonable size there, and three different species were observed. And they appear to be in good health. So that's, that's a good thing. There is, it was also mentioned that, as you said, the brush, I mean, once the brush was cleaned up, the trees would be more sustainable and healthier.
Correct.
So that would be, you know, a good thing to do. The suggestion is that the city property be left, that the trees be left there undisturbed. However, and if, if there was anything, any trees to be taken down, that they would be replaced, and either on your property or in another location, but we will, you know, talk about that. We hope that that...
Yeah, and we agree with that. That's what I said, Mr., you know, when you see this house, I mean, it's a large investment. He cares as much as the city about maintaining an appropriate landscape, an appropriate buffer. So we never intended to, you know, strip down that area other than cleaning brush. And as you said, we can leave, if the trees are healthy and in good shape, fine, if we wanted to put in something else, we would replace them. With, I don't know, we can work with your shade tree commission, whoever, you know, as to an agreement on types of plant.
So the vacation is basically just to make the lot a little bit bigger? That's the only reason?
Correct, correct, yeah. And I just want to address the sidewalk. I want to go back to the sidewalk for a minute. If I go up to the screen?
Well, so...
So, I was just there 10 minutes before I came here. So there's all sidewalk here on this Jim Lynch side, and then there's no sidewalk, sorry, no sidewalk, sidewalk here on my property. And then there's a home right here on Bazi Court, and then the sidewalk, as you can see, can start again. So I have no problem or any objections if the lot is vacated. I have no problem or objections to put the sidewalk up to my property, of course. But then I just want to add that this lot right here on Bazi Court, I guess, has a front yard technically, I guess, on Bazi and on Jim Lynch, that there's no sidewalk there. So there's going to be that little gap. I just want to, just want to point that out.
So, the property owner, you know, in answer to Mr. Levy's question, and to you, Mr. Hirsch, I'm going to assume, I'm guessing, but I'll have to ask Mr. Woolley this. I'm assuming the reason they, whoever developed the land didn't put concrete there because it was right-of-way and belonged to the city. So my, I guess my...
Their property wasn't on that side. You had Mr. Levy's property, and so guys always used to come up and object to the board budget.
I'll tell you, his last name is...
Lowdinger?
Wanderinger, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think he passed away. It's just the wife's alive.
He and his neighbor always used to come up, they were engineers and board members, and they always used to object to the budget.
Right. So is that remaining portion still part of our right-of-way?
I would have to see the survey. It looks like, from what I can see from the document, the documents of Mr. Hirsch, the tag deck, on the north side of Mr. Levy's property, the city right-of-way is about six feet in excess of the street, the paved right-of-way. And I assume, which is always dangerous as you read the board, that that paper's down to even less.
So I guess the question, Mr. Levy, would be, would you be willing to complete, for us giving you the right-of-way, would you be willing to complete that section because it's very short?
It would include...
Or would you not?
The park that we would be vacating would be right alongside what we're asking you for.
Right, so we're asking further beyond my property, on the, on Mr. Wanderinger's property?
No, it's on the right-of-way.
It's still on the right-of-way.
Inside the right-of-way.
Yeah, we'd have to, we'd have to find out the right-of-way, then we'd have to get that survey.
But obviously, I wouldn't ask you if it was his property.
Right, right.
But it turns out that it's part of the lot of way, right-of-way, because then again, we'd break up again, you know what I mean?
Yeah, I don't have a problem. I don't have a problem. I don't have a problem any additional sidewalk to connect to the existing sidewalk that is there. I don't have a problem. I don't have a problem.
The requested right-of-way vacation area, it now is down to, at the rear line of Mr. Levy's property, to the Wanderinger property, 8.3 feet. Okay? So, you know, see, it goes on that triangle, it starts at 21.5.
No, I'm familiar with Mr. Hirsch, yeah.
8.3. And that's where the 50 feet is, your 50 feet.
Correct.
So the answer is yes?
Yeah. I don't have a problem.
So we, we'll have to get, I'll submit to Mr. Hirsch here, if we can check and see from the original subdivision map, we may have a more accurate depiction of the right-of-way and the street. I don't know. We'd have to go back to Woolley.
Okay. If I hear the council correctly, correct me if I'm wrong, tonight, you've had your questions answered about the trees and the sidewalk. Based on that, I've been working with Mr. Hirsch in the next two weeks to put together an ordinance to be in your packages that would cover both of those issues, as well as cover the Wanderinger issue with respect to the, the, uh, street sidewalks in the right-of-way continuing to the north.
Correct.
So it'd be continuous. And we could do that with language and agree to a term, whether the sidewalks be done in two years or something of that nature, because I assume that this house is going to take some period of time to build.
About 18 months, probably about 18 months. But I probably, you know, if vacated and if approved, granted, I probably would coordinate it, you know, during the construction phase.
So that would exceed a month or something?
Yeah, not to exceed most likely a few years, yeah.
Okay.
Jim, and then just in terms of what Joy was talking about, when we're talking about specific trees that we would, that we're requesting they would keep, that would be specific in this resolution as well?
In the, in the ordinance of vacation, Joy will give me the document that she's referred to, which by, references five trees, three species, and will maintain language that those will be maintained. And if, in fact, they have to be taken down or die, that they'll be replaced somewhere on the property or elsewhere in the city.
Correct.
Yeah, it would probably be right along the same property line, right along the same, that's the buffer area he's looking for.
And then the buffer's key.
And then just one final question. So it's been determined that no one sees any public use for this property. Is that accurate to say?
This has been out to the department heads for months.
Months ago.
For several months without any, any response from the department.
It's right up to very happy to address that complaint.
I would think so, yeah. I think it is a win-win type situation.
And Mr. Levy, you would also be clearing those underbrush and taking the vines off of the...
Yeah, eventually, not right-of-way, of course. Most likely, at, when the home is up, when the home is done, when it comes time to do the landscaping, I would like to clear out the underbrush and replace it with some really nice, a really nice buffer with some really nice oak trees, so that's a nice privacy along that side.
Because the trees that are there, they do have aesthetic value.
Okay.
Great.
Joe?
Yes?
Now that I understand you, and the ordinance that you're going to repair, there are going to be two stipulations. Sidewalk, and also the present trees will stay there.
Yes, they're the two main ones, and there are the subparts under that as well.
I understand.
Right.
I just want to make sure.
That's 100% correct.
Okay. Right, folks?
Thank you. Does anyone else have any more questions? John? Me? No? Okay, good.
Thank you so much for putting this on your agenda, Tom.
I'll get to you before the, before the end of the week.
Okay, thanks a lot. Thank you.
Next one, Jen. We have Mr. McNamara.
Excuse me?
There he is.
Hi, guys.
Who will be discussing various parking ordinances and street changes.
Thank you very much. Pat McNamara from Scourancy Hollenbeck. I'm here with Eric Ballou from Insight Engineering. We've previously submitted for your consideration surveys of ordinances to execute various right-of-ways that need to be realigned or reestablished as part of Phase 3 of Pure Village. Eric will be handing out a color-coded map, which we figured was the most direct way of trying to walk through this, because no one wants to sit here and read hours, minutes, and seconds in a right-of-way ordinance. Not even us lawyers want to do it, that's why we have engineers. Basically, what you have before you for consideration are six different right-of-way ordinances. The seventh ordinance is wanting to change a parking designation on one of the side streets that's in Phase 3 as well. Eric, if you want to pick it up from there and walk everybody through it?
I would definitely. So, you know, when we, we see playwork room for Phase 3 of Pure Village, you know, the property didn't really align with 15 or 16 properties that exist today. It doesn't really align with the properties that we need for development. So to do that, we need to change some of the different right-of-ways within the town. The first one you see in the center, we call it the Vacation of Aster Place. So that's one of the right-of-way vacations that we need, because one of the buildings actually goes over top of that right-of-way.
Which actually, I think, is only one where title's going to our client as opposed to conveying it back to the city.
Well, there's two, there's two. And then at the bottom of the page on Morris Avenue, you see an orange area. So that's a right-of-way dedication, where the land's being dedicated from the developer to the city. Then through the right side, there's this large turquoise area.
Go back to Aster Place, that, that's no longer a street, right? It's not being used as a street per se?
It's not being used as a street.
Hasn't been since they demolished it, there was a back way into Fountain Fountain, I believe. There might have been a couple of smaller, smaller ones at the end of it that were acquired by Applied and Mall Street back 15, 16 years ago.
The turquoise area we have, that is Ocean Avenue, that's a new roadway that was created as part of the overall development to separate the hotel and residential buildings. Then at the top of the sheet, in green, is another right-of-way dedication for Melrose Terrace as well. So we're making that right-of-way larger. And that leaves us a corner lot. Block 222, Lot 1, there's a lot at the corner of Melrose and Ocean Avenue. That's actually a city-owned lot. So what we're proposing to do in the purple is a portion of that lot, .04 acres, would be consolidated into the development side of the project. The remaining portion of that, which is shown in pink at the top of the plan, that would actually just be transferred over to standard sitting right-of-way. So it's still going to maintain ownership by the city instead of being a lot, a regular lot, it'd just be morphed into the Ocean Avenue right-of-way. And when you look at the overall numbers, you know, the applicant's going to get approximately .11 acres from Aster Place, .04 acres from the little purple dot. So it's about .15 of area that the applicant's requesting to be used. We're going to get back approximately 1.13 acres of land. So at the end of these transactions, in a sense, the city would actually receive an acre more land than what the applicant's actually receiving. So there's a lot of dedication.
Where's the give-back, where's that give-back located here?
Uh, the, I guess the orange would be a give-back. The turquoise area is a give-back, and the green area are all give-backs.
So Eric, why, why is this being done now, and why did Applied not do it when they submitted their plans for Phase 3?
Part of the resolution compliance, we never actually satisfied all the resolution compliance conditions for that site plan approval. So when we stopped actually modifying the plan documents, this was never addressed at the time.
They would have had to do that, definitely.
We're also trying to do it now, because in order to get DCA sign-off on all of the CRAFTA requirements for marketing these, because this is condos, it's not rental, like require approvals, they need to see this done. I'm not handling that filing, but I'm told this is one of the items on the checklist that has to be taken care of in order to move that process forward. And to get that process completed, then they can start marketing. And so that's the importance of starting to try to move these things a lot faster than we did with the last two approvals.
And then through the planning board approval process, we submitted the subdivision map and the descriptions being used in the ordinances. That was submitted to the planning board consultant to review the subdivision map, review the descriptions, to make sure everything was in order to allow transactional access to occur as well.
And we've also got to get the changes to the subdivision perfected through the planning board also, which we believe will be able to handle in the street.
Carl, do you have any comments on, on any of these?
Yep. Here, if you're following through what the subdivision that came before the planning board references.
And just by way of the start, we'll back. The concept of this was approved in the original developer's agreement with the predecessor entitled with the applied comments. So this is nothing new. When we did the developer's agreement, we didn't know how the site was going to lay out, but it was contemplated that various easements and right-of, and the yes-to-right-of-way would no longer exist, provided they decided on a plan that didn't need Aster Place, and obviously they don't. So one other question that we have, I think the council would want to know, and Director Robuck is here, the parking ordinance that is being proposed to be introduced as part of this plan, does that in any way impinge upon the parking management plan that's in place for Pure Village 1, 2, and 3?
It does not. We really need to have this ordinance passed so we can actually perform the parking management plan. Because there's actually, what we're asking for is removal of restrictions created back in 1982 and 1987 to allow us to park on both sides of the street of Pure Village.
So in that effect, here will be increased parking rather than decreased parking in the area, is that what you're saying?
That's correct. We follow these old 1980s rules. We need to actually have less parking available to the public.
And Jim, these should have provided to the city's parking consultant to verify that, that it won't be a, have an impact on the parking plan.
And the updated draft of the plan was before the planning board, when they took their action last week, and we realized we're going to have to continue to work with your consultants to keep sharpening the pencil and make sure it works, especially since now our client contemplates building this all in one Phase 9 and 2 as was originally contemplated. So that's going to place even greater importance on making sure that management plan functions.
And Carl, from a planning perspective, this is one of the conditions. Is this a condition of that planning board approval?
Yes, as opposed to the subdivision, yes.
Yeah, it's sort of, in the resolution, it references the planning board engineers' review letter, major consulting. Within the major consulting review letter was the changing of the parking ordinances. So it was directly in there.
And I understand this is for informational purposes, as a council, in the main, is not privy to what went on in the planning board, I understand.
Okay, Jim. I have a question regarding, on that parking review, do you have it, Mary?
I do.
Okay, good. Where you mentioned Ocean Avenue is the west side between Laird and Morris. Isn't that already being used?
Between Laird and Ocean Avenue. It probably is.
Yeah.
Honestly, I guess, I believe we are.
It may well be, but we want to make sure we clean it up in the ordinance, so there's no...
Okay, and what is the...
Right now, it's, because the ordinance is prohibited, so directly we should remove it.
What is the explanation, give me more of an explanation for the bottom part of that first page where it says Ocean Avenue side, both delete reference to Melrose Terrace. So there's nothing going to be changed there?
You know what, right now, the ordinance is written, from Northbath Ave all the way to Melrose, from that whole length of Ocean Avenue, there's no parking on Ocean Avenue. So we're asking to go instead of Melrose, move it right back, and keep that restriction but only up to Morris Avenue. So the restriction will still exist from Northbath to Morris.
Actually, we need to change, we need to take a look at that, too, because we're permitting parking between Northbath and Pure Village.
Okay, that's okay. If this was just for our...
This ordinance is less urgent, and if this one needs to wait to get tweaked, that's fine.
Okay.
We need the other ones for the CRAFTA, because we've got to affect the subdivision.
We can clean them up and get them closed, ready, all of the ready for introduction to do.
Okay.
Part of, another question, I'm not sure if this is, you can, something that you can answer. But I know right now, in that pink area, well, maybe, maybe it's actually the turquoise area, they're, they're using a lot of that for parking for light cars and...
No, they're parking on the...
Now what's going to happen to that?
They're parking on the block 22.
Block 22, is that still going to be available?
No.
Yeah.
And start construction?
Block 22, .01, we have an agreement with them to utilize for this summer. If they begin construction of the hotel, we've got to find another place to park our light cars.
Will there be any place to park for the buses?
No, not on this side. That's why we're looking at other sites for buses.
Okay. Any more questions?
Well, we have here, what's the, what's the construction timeline, any idea?
Well, we've got to go back to DEP, get that in the sign-off on the plan revisions to comply with the sector permit under CAFRA. We've got to finalize some work with the county with their planning board. All the utility will serves are pretty much lined up, and as they've been before, our clients' hope would be that they could start doing construction before end of the year. They certainly won't do any interference of the summer season, at least not this year. There may be some next year, just, it'll be just physically unavoidable.
I will say this, I was tasked to complete a bid set for the board lot plans, to do a bid set for that full improvements by last Friday. So the client is very anxious to bid that work. Of course, other permits have to go in place, but they're not waiting for the permits then doing construction documents. They're actually looking at doing that now, and hopefully really starts to bid shortly.
Now we should do it in one phase.
Yes.
What will we be, will we start with the residential? How are they going to, do they, or that has been determined yet?
Management established, we'll start with the hotel portion, residential or side of case. I'm not sure.
Okay. Because I know originally they would do all the public stuff and then go back to the hotel.
Once they've got the construction company lined up and they put a plan together, I'm sure they'll consult everybody in the city and let you know what the projected phasing is, and where that could interfere with traffic or public access. And the safety protocol, also in place with your police department, first responders.
Thank you.
Okay, so if there's, if this is here, we'll work with council to have these ready, and also with Mr. Woolley and the police department, to have these ready for introduction at the next meeting.
Do you have a general business system? How about the council's own, so?
So the last draft that you have submitted is the one that you're...
Yeah, we'll go back to go and check one more time, should we?
I'm not sure.
If you get those to me, or give me the okay on that by the end of the week, so we should be fine.
Okay. Would you, would you please repeat for us what the city is getting back in this?
So the city will be getting the orange piece, the turquoise, and the green, which accounts for about 1.13 acres. So that's how much land would go from the private development to the city at long range. And what we're asking for in return is the Vacation of Aster Place, which is .11 acres, and a .04 acre portion of Lot 1, Lot 222, which is about a total of .15 acres we're asking for. So it's 1.13 versus .15, so it's approximately .9 acres of additional to give to the city versus the...
And keep in mind, you're getting the project over a, a non-existing Aster, Aster Place, which is really a paved street. And if we left a paved street there, we can't get the development, the way it's presently approved by the planning board.
Every approval's always been contemplated that Aster Place was going to be taken out as part of the overall redevelopment progress. Right.
Okay, any more questions? Mr. McMillan, Mr. Green, okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Good night, everyone, thank you.
Good night. Okay, next on the agenda.
Good evening.
Will be discussing redevelopment, redevelopment ordinance, amendments to redevelopment ordinance?
Good evening, everybody. Yeah, actually, see, there's two items that are somewhat related, but they arose through independent processes. What I'll be discussing are proposed amendments to redevelopment ordinance that are more on the administrative and process side, whereas Mr. Turner will be discussing the planning board's recommendations after they have reviewed the substantive provisions and the land use controls of the redevelopment plan.
Mr. Turner, would you like to come up to the table here?
So I think, although they're both amendments to essentially the same ordinance, there's two different aspects, and again, they weren't arrived at in conjunction, but they happened to be done before you at a similar time. So one possibility is depending on what direction you may want to take after hearing from the planning board and their recommendations, whether or not there should be a consolidated approach or something that you proceed independently. So essentially, with respect to the non-substantive, we'll call procedural, administrative procedures, the redevelopment ordinance was amended late 2013 to essentially address the changing role, which was the change in economy and the changing application of the domain in the redevelopment context. So a large part of what happened there was amendment to manage to remove from purchase all redevelopment areas, with very few exceptions, and it was a policy adopted to not exercise that. The original drafting of the redevelopment plan was contemplated, contemplated sector wide development, like we're seeing with Pier Village. To be front north, be front south, for example, were contemplated and had been approved as comprehensive, single developer developments. Well, that had changed for those various reasons. So amendment made 2013 to try to streamline a process that now was seeing smaller development of current owners of smaller parcels that were broken down and done individually. The amendments have facilitated quite a bit of development in that regard, as you've seen from quite a few projects in downtown, then be fronts out, and then approved, but there was still some drumming pains in that process. So what these amendments are trying to do is essentially further facilitate and streamline the process that we've been implementing. The main substantive aspects of this ordinance are to address some things that we could tweak further that then changed that were made in 2013 with respect to the process for escrow payments. There was a smaller range that was contemplated that's currently in the ordinance, so this one change proposes having a more flexible judgment process where the administration would look at a project and make a determination based on the specific needs of that project. The other aspects that are again more procedural relate to other proposed methods of, in some ways, making things easier for the smaller development projects that have come in. We did create a request for designation process, which applies to small projects proposed by current property owners, and that has been effective, but we found in the implementation, particularly with, for example, these one south projects, there were projects that didn't qualify for that small process, but still, it still needed some level of pretty strong negotiation and a lot of city input into those plans, but at the same time, somewhat more flexibility. So that's what these provisions are designed to accomplish. Through that experience, and it proposes changes to the request for qualification proposed documents that may be inconsistent with these changes to ordinance. And a couple of the key like key points in that are notifying developers more expressly what is required for submission and at what point. And then finally, it codifies policies that the city, again, when we're dealing with sector wide development of one developer, things like contributions to offsite or off-track improvements, contributions generally to the redevelopment area, and tax exemptions and abatements were solely just negotiated in the context of a large project. With having developers come in and qualify in a different process, it's become apparent and recommended that the city really should have a policy and advise potential developers of what those policies are. So with respect to those two aspects where these negotiations come up, it's on the one side a request for tax exemption or abatement relief by developer, and on the other side a request by the city for contributions by the developer. So what's laid out here has been, is a policy that's been administratively really carried out, and as you know, we've discussed over months, and this is really a basic, this is a way of codifying that, so we expressly say, within the ordinance, these are the things we're expecting from developers, and this is what developers can expect from the city. So as I said, I'd say we're essentially codifying a process that has been implemented in practice, because this way everybody knows what it is, and it provides guidance for developers to look forward in the process. That's essentially a summary of what's proposed on the administrative procedural end of the ordinance. And I guess we could take that first, if there's any questions or discussion about that, and then we could move into Carl's space.
Are there any questions for Mr. Beckman regarding this portion?
I think there's an awful lot to explore at one time. I know a lot of more point in towards, but I don't really have any specific questions. Did I note a new number seven Broadway on it? A new designation?
Oh, no, that's not a new designation, that's actually just catching the ordinance up to acknowledge that there is the seventh sector of Broadway. The original ordinance actually.
It was always there?
It was adopted in 2002. It was adopted after the guideline revision was adopted, so that's actually sort of.
There's no westerly border on that mention?
Westerly border?
For the corridor mentioned in here.
Really? It's in the ordinance already?
Well, it's not mentioned in here.
No, it's in the redevelopment ordinance, and it stops, the area in need of redevelopment stops at the westerly corner of Memorial and Liberty. West of that to the tracks is now an area in need of rehabilitation.
We did pass that, but it is.
Oh, yeah.
But that's not mentioned.
No, it wouldn't be, it's in another ordinance.
Right, that's already been adopted.
It's already been adopted.
So the redevelopment, and to clarify, the redevelopment plan actually still applies to the entirety of the Broadway corridor. The difference is that the redevelopment plan has applied outside of what we call the lower Broadway corridor, which Jenny just described, which is still the redevelopment area. Outside of that area, in the rehabilitation area, there is no power of the domain, and you cannot grant long-term tax exemptions. Otherwise, all of the land use controls still apply fully to the Broadway corridor and these planning provisions in its entirety.
So for example, the lot that is between Lippenpot and Fourth Avenue, that you see on Broadway, a large vacant lot, if that were to be developed, it would be developed as under the standard of an area in need of rehabilitation, and all those restrictions and rights would apply to that particular piece of property, if as and when it was ever decided to be developed by the property owner or a subsequent purchase. But the key there is, even though it lays fallow and is almost directly across the street from City Hall, the city does not have the power of eminent domain to take that parcel, even though it's vacant. So it's going to sit until somebody decides to develop.
I mean, to go along with what Mayor James said, I mean, this is, there's a lot of sort of comprehensive information here, but we're just sort of relying on you, I think, at least I am. I personally would rather have a more thorough understanding of that, and obviously, you know, the ten minutes and workshop that we have here. I know you would suggest that, you know, we give you the poll and so forth. Personally, I'd like to have, I don't know if council wants it, but I'd like to have a special meeting to discuss this a little further, where that perhaps you can go back and forth through ideas, and say, if there is a question, we can.
I would suggest maybe that we do that after they go through this, or anything?
Yeah, well, that's the other thing I was going to say, because I know, Jim, you sent a memo, do we want to do it before, or do we want to do it after?
My suggestion would be, you would refer this to the planning board, that the planning board review it, have their comments and input to you, and then as a final say, you will have all that time to study because you're not taking any action other than referral.
Okay.
And then when it comes to you for potential introduction, potential public hearing, you would then have the benefit of their views plus your own analysis of it, and you have to write to change the recommendations of the planning board, as long as you lay out what those changes are.
If that's your suggestion, that sounds good. I'd still sort of like to recommend a special meeting at some point to.
You could have that after it's back from the planning board.
So the resolution, the last resolution that's on for tonight, I don't have my iPad, Alex is updating something for me, that is what you're referring to?
Yeah, Resolution 175.
Okay, I'm simply saying that we're.
Here it is, it's a draft, you give us your comments, your review, and it comes back to you for final approval.
On that note, shall we have Carl?
Carl, sure.
Can I just ask a quick question? Do you feel it's advantageous to nail these two together, Carl? You're saying no, you don't consider.
I don't know that it's advantageous, but if they end up being one meeting apart.
No, but I'm saying in one document, we should keep it separate.
No, I think that they are too separate.
Very separate.
Okay.
What Rob just talked, what Rob just talked about was more procedural.
Just procedural.
What we did with the planning board for the last six months had absolutely nothing at all to do with it. We dealt with ordinances and master plan, the oceanfront master plan and the Broadway oceanfront development plan, totally different. To put the two together would confuse the issue and make it almost impossible to make it simplified.
This reference process.
Correct.
What you're doing is.
Correct.
So in terms of our agenda this evening, Rob, you're going to say whatever yours is going to say, and then Carl, you're going to talk about.
Right, and I think in a sense, subject to any other questions or discussion you want to have, I'm done with that, I think we're comfortable, and we can go ahead and refer this to the planning board, we can schedule a special meeting, and we'll be wanting to proceed after the planning board.
The planning board's up here until three weeks, right? At least three weeks, if not longer.
If that, the agenda's packed.
For two months.
Well, what's happening, the last meeting?
No, my point is, if we had more questions, we have two months to kind of work it out.
Okay.
That was my point. It's not like something in the next two weeks we have to.
No, but like I said, from our view in administration, we think this is really codifying a policy that's been in practice, but it's always too, I mean, it's a public record, so developer wants, I can say, well, here's what we're discussing, but it's not, it's just, it wouldn't be enacted, but it's some loose guidance.
Okay. Any more questions? Shall I turn it over to Carl? Carl? Okay. Thank you.
And I got, those are gone.
Carl, could you talk about?
Sure. Question, did everybody review this that was sent to them on the reexamination report from the oceanfront master plan, oceanfront, or the development plan and the redevelopment design guidelines? Those are Carl's four pages, right?
No, I'm sorry.
Correct.
No, I have not. I just died. Was he in charge? Well, I didn't think I.
I might have got it in my flight call. I don't have time to read it.
Was he in charge?
Mine.
Last Thursday, last week? Okay, the reason I asked that, I could do the short version of the long version, since I have to do somewhere in between.
Yeah.
This was, the city council tasked the planning board to take a look at the redevelopment design guidelines, the master plan, oceanfront master plan, and the Broadway oceanfront redevelopment plan back at the end of 2015. At the planning board meeting on December 15, 2015, we put together a committee that worked the last six months of reviewing all of the previous published documents that the city has concerning redevelopment, redevelopment in this area. As you can see, the first page or two contains 19 of the documents that were reviewed and looked at. We are not required by state statute to do any kind of a reexamination of a redevelopment area, but since our redevelopment plan is adopted, basically started back in 1995, it was felt that we needed to take a look at this, and also the input that we're getting from various property owners, concerned citizens, council members, board members, and the reality of what various litigation has affected parts of the redevelopment area, and also the fact that some of the successful redevelopment has left over some individual properties that are like islands unto themselves, became apparent that we should look at the possibility of either doing a modification to the redevelopment plan, or at the very least, to do some changes to the coordinators themselves, which are the design guidelines. So what this document did was the result of the committee's review that was presented to the planning board at the last planning board meeting, which was on July 19, and was recommended by the planning board after they reviewed it to send this out to council for the idea of this being accepted, along with the recommendations. And very quickly, what we did is there's, you have, the recommendation was that we do not need to change the redevelopment plan, or the Broadway oceanfront redevelopment plan, or the oceanfront master plan. They are good documents, they are on solid planning foundation, and they are intact. However, the design guidelines, in certain areas, it was requested that we tweak them, that we make some modifications or changes. And very specifically, if you're familiar with the design guidelines, which are these books that everybody, I believe, has, there's seven documents. Book number one, the recommendation is to read that at the same, that's basically the general design guideline book, that is intact. Book number two, Pier Village Center, there's no change at this time, but the realization is that with things that are going on there this summer, including the new Pier Village 3 project that will be approved, or actually is approved by the city, should be approved by DEP and go to construction, and also the experiment that the city's allowing to happen this year with various uses that we never considered down there, we may want to revisit that sometime in the future and make some changes as to the types of uses down there, depending on the results after the summer and what we see with the new construction. Book number, book number three is the Broadway Gateway book. That is the section that is basically from Second Avenue eastward to Ocean Boulevard, and in that area, there was one recommendation that was made, it was something that was most likely left out of the process back in 1995, is there's a grouping of properties along the east side of Second Avenue that exists right now, one is the Beer Garden site that's under construction. Adjacent to that to the south is a mixed-use building, commercial ground floor residential above, the next building to the south is the same thing, a mixed-use building, commercial glow residential above, the next property to the south is a multifamily house, and then there's a vacant lot. The desire is to conclude those five properties in an area that is still in the Broadway Gateway, but allows a different use than is designated as to the area map in the design guideline book. And the type of uses that we would like to see there is to allow residential, commercial mixes and commercial uses as standalone commercials. The reason for this is the fact that with the Beer Garden there, you're beginning to see that corner, both with the CVS and with the Beer Garden, you're seeing that beginning to develop, and with the ordinance not in place that allow for some additional commercial development, they will remain as islands. And in another part of this, one of the things in good zoning is you try not to create a zone line down the middle of a street. And west side of Second Avenue is basically a commercial residential mix in the lower Broadway corridor area, and in this area, actually was left, in the original design was left just for residential, so it really doesn't match what could develop on the west side of the street, so the desire. So the desire is to make that one modification in that area. Book number four is the Beachfront North book. There you had the most changes as a result of litigation and settlements, Metosa settlement, the TDB settlement. There is one major leftover property at the north end of the town, and the recommendation is based upon those two-
There's the one right up on the corner.
Correct, on Seaview Avenue, Old Ocean Avenue. The recommendation is that in order to be consistent with what the court recommended settlements were, that we would develop a housing standard that could go in there both for multifamily and for single family, based upon the standards that were given to us in the Metosa settlement and the TDB settlement. So there's the option that is there to do something in that area that mimics the two projects that were basically court ordered. Book number five is Hotel Campus. The recommendation here is to keep it exactly the way it is. We have not received any specific input from anybody as to wanting to make any changes, and even if we did, we feel that that is a centerpiece area of the redevelopment zone, and it should remain as Hotel Campus. Beachfront South, currently you have four projects going on in Beachfront South. Some have gone through the approval process, some are about to, and one of the things that we've had with city policy for the last twenty years is that whenever there is pending litigation or pending application, we make no recommendations for any change in ordinances to affect an area both pro or con and potential development. So at this time, we're not recommending any changes for Beachfront South. Book number seven, which is lower Broadway corridor, we divided this into two areas. Seven A in book number seven is basically the area that is also pending potential litigation under the DRA redevelopment process. So we are not making any recommendations at this time for that specific redevelopment area of the lower Broadway corridor. However, we are making a recommendation into the rest of the lower Broadway corridor, which is the area in need of rehabilitation. And one of the things in there is, for various reasons, right now, the only type of residential that's allowed there is what they call live-work residential. It's a great concept, but technology has basically caught up with that, and it's something that we have seen absolutely zero desire for anybody to do anything like that there. It also is a very difficult problem to enforce that when it comes to doing certificate of occupancies and also mercantile licenses. So our recommendation is to make that an option, but to then also make other residential on second and third floors as an option, not as a requirement. And in addition to that, the planning board looked at the fact that you have an older city, older center city area, that many of these properties, if they wanted to do any kind of residential or improvements on the upper floors, they would not have any land available to do parking. So in talking with our consultant from Boston, a recommendation was made that if you do residential and you do it out of the live-work type requirement, that would require one parking place for dwelling unit, and also if we did non-live-work, it would require two parking places per dwelling unit, that in lieu of parking on site, that there would be a payment, a one-time payment into a pool of $5,000 per required parking space only for the residential, not the commercial. And that would be used by the city to potentially either have enough money to pool to do a deck at some time or acquire additional property. Final recommendation is that since we went through this, is not to do anything to edit or change these booklets, but to come out with an eighth booklet that would basically be, when we do the zoning ordinance part of this, that it would be an eighth booklet that would incorporate the previous two addendums that were done for Beachfront North after the Metosa settlement, and we were proactive in Beachfront South, and we did one down there, and also is to incorporate that with the few modifications that we're suggesting and recommending to be done as an eighth document, as a standalone addendum that goes to everybody whenever they pick up a design guideline book. And that's the short version. Sorry if it's a little long.
Now, what I would suggest here, and I think, John, you're right, this is the kind of a discussion that you should take your time with, walk through, conceivably have a special meeting if you have questions, because this is really covering, what, seven zones, skipping parts because of ongoing litigation, the long-rank partners, giving you new concepts that, except for Mary Jane, none of the present council were involved with the construction of this, and it's a lot to throw on your plate.
What would we have to go, is this an ordinance change, or?
Yes. Yes.
I could thank you for that.
Well, it's twofold.
If you noticed, Carl, on book seven, it said lower Broadway corridor, and we put that in.
And that woman in ordinance?
Yeah. You have like the number seven with Broadway, it says Broadway.
It just says Broadway. It should be consistent with whatever they're-
Yes.
Please.
So Carl, just so I understand your concept of book eight, so let's say somebody was interested in book two, whatever that was, they would read book two, and then they'd also have eight, so that they would just double-check that there might have been an update- And it would have a statement in the book, in the document, that basically say that all requirements in the existing design guidelines stay in place with the exception of, and then it would have for each of those the amendments, if you want to call it.
Right.
Any more questions for Carl before that?
Just also, you should note that this is a planning board project. You weren't involved in it officially, individually. You may have gotten comments from a planning board member, and certainly, the administration was not involved, certainly, I was not involved in this process, so you know that from the beginning, and Carl will verify how that process has gone over the last six months.
Thank you, by the way, for the references there. It was a lot of work.
Yes. My suggestion to the council is if you, I mean, I realize some of you may have not got this, read it through, please call me at the office, and it's easier for me to show you the maps and the documents that were looked at if you need to see them.
Did it come directly from you, Carl, or did it just-
No.
-just come from you?
No.
Okay. And it came on Thursday? Thursday, you brought that up to me?
Yeah.
Would you mind reviewing seven again?
Book seven.
Book seven. Can you talk about something that I don't see it written here? We were talking about, okay, leaving the non-live-work residential units as an option and the live-work residential units as an option.
So you have two options. Right now, it only allows live work.
Okay, so that's the option we are adding. And that would be, those are both second floor apartments?
Correct, second, third, potentially fourth floor.
Okay.
Nothing ground floor. That has to be commercial or all.
The concept is to give more variation and more possibilities for property owners to develop as they see fit various processes, and not hamstring them to one concept.
Right.
And what I was saying before about the technology, live work, the idea was like somebody would come in, like if artists have a studio, or an architect, or some kind of professional, I would be doing something like that, accounting, whatever. However, what's happening with computers, you don't even need a major computer, you just have that, you can do all your design, everything on a laptop, basically. So all of us basically use our homes as a live-work type, and if we're doing anything other than playing games on the computer.
Right. Any more questions? Okay, thank you very much. You've seen the effort that was put into that. Thank you.
You have a big committee, a work hard, and a good working.
Okay, looks like you're good. Review of the regular meeting agenda. Have any questions regarding the regular meeting agenda? Council on Mid-Billing?
Yep.
Council on Blue? Council on Sally? Okay, I don't either. Good. So I need a motion to close Stuckett on favor. Any opposed?
I need a motion to adopt a resolution to go into executive steps for the following items: contract negotiations, long-rank partners, castor town of, litigation, telling, personnel matter, health department, and police department.
Roll call. Mrs. Bellwicks?
What'd you say?
Mrs. Bellwicks, roll call.
Yes, yes, I'm sorry.
Mr. Paul?
Yes.
Dr. Sally?
Yes.
Mrs. Bestow.
Yes.